We'll now have our city council study session. Again, note for the record that all of our council members are present. The first item on the agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda for our meeting upstairs. Council, please refer to that document. I know we had several presentations and questions last Thursday about this meeting. Currently, there are no items off of the consent agenda. Council, do you have any questions or would you like a presentation on anything on the agenda for later this evening? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda then is item two. That's to hear and discuss an update of the Love Your Neighborhood program and recommended strategies for fiscal year 1920. Liz and Lindsay and Ray, thank you for joining us. Look forward to the presentation.
Mayor and council members, thank you for having us and the opportunity to present on the pilot program that we called Love Your Neighborhood, also affectionately called LIN throughout this presentation. You'll hear me use that term. With me, Ray Timmich and Lindsay Belinky. And also, I want to give a special shout out to Emily Greco, who is in the audience. She was basically the project manager on staff. So, I want to thank Emily for her long and good work that she's done. Want to accomplish three things with this presentation. First is a recap as to how we came to implement the Love Your Neighborhood program. We also want to share the highlights and achievements after three years and discuss the lessons we learned as a result of this pilot. The LIN program was created as a result of council direction to utilize federal funds to have a lasting impact in challenging neighborhoods. At council's request, staff developed a program model with a multifaceted approach and recommended using CDBG funds. When council reviewed the pilot recommendations, it was approved to use CDBG in the amount of $417,000. After three years, we've expended all of that except for about $80,000. The next step was to figure out how to select the right neighborhood for this pilot. At the time, we had a Transforming Neighborhoods Initiative Work Group, which was comprised of many departments. And it was met through this group. We developed a method on how to look at existing data sets that could be used to identify challenging neighborhoods. It was a very interesting process and what we ended up coming down to was four data points, and we developed what's called a blight index. It was comprised of code violations, crime rates, incidents of graffiti, and number of vacant properties. And the data was overlaid into this graph, as you can see on the screen. And the darker the shade, it meant that the higher the incidence of these four areas. As we presented the neighborhoods, for the pilot, the first neighborhood that was selected was from Main Street to Broadway and extension to Robson. Later, in January 2018, we added a second neighborhood, which was Country Club to extension and Main Street to Second Place. In total, these two neighborhoods were comprised of about 400 family, single-family homes. Fifty-seven percent of those were homeowner occupied. It also included 278 multifamily units. And in looking at the median income, it was about $38,000 at that time for that neighborhood. The approach of the pilot was to provide and engage, educate, and connect residents to services, to encourage pride in the neighborhood, to ensure that the improvements were sustainable, and also to develop leadership in the neighborhood. Although Community Services Department was the leading department for the pilot, we had all departments involved in one way or another. And they were all very helpful in providing a variety of services. I'd like to share just a few examples of how departments participated. Mesa Fire and Medical helped us with inspection and installation of smoke alarms in 30% of the homes, and they utilized over 30 volunteers. There was a team approach in handling several vacant properties with PD, fire code, and building safety. Code compliance, we'll hear more about how they participated, but they did do a lot of assessments for us, both on homes and businesses, to provide a baseline to measure the impact of the work that we did with this pilot. Transportation also helped with easement projects, looking at ADA sidewalks, access and street conditions. Utilities assessed entire area for utility box repairs and violations, solid waste with dumpster services and neighborhood cleanup resources. And finally, PD also provided special enforcement on challenging properties. In addition, Community Services conducted extensive resident outreach. And Lindsay will be talking about the surveying and some of the outreach that we did. As part of the pilot, staff had recommended bringing on a third-party contractor to conduct neighborhood outreach, the education piece, the exterior renovation and rehabilitation of homes. And right around this time in 2017, the city had received, participated in a partnership with Bloomberg Philanthropies, and was, if you remember, What Works Cities Initiative. And through that What Works Cities Initiative, Harvard Performance Lab provided pro bono work. It was a technical assistance over a six-month period in order to develop a results-driven contract. And the work that they helped us with was developing the RFP, creating that contract with measurements, defining key goals, encouraging partnerships among the vendors, incorporating performance metrics, and implementing active contract management and to encourage collaboration. Through this technical assistance, the Request for Proposal led us to Habitat for Humanity. I do want to thank Jennifer North and Hannah Asmati with Harvard Performance Labs for all their hard work and teaching us about this new way to contract. As a result, as I said, it brought us to Habitat for Humanity, and I do want to recognize their great work. We do have two of them represented here today, Gabriel Harameel, who does their outreach, and Siobhan Blanco. If you guys would stand, I want to thank you for your work. And they had a whole crew, a whole team of staff that did the grant writing, submitted the proposal contracting, and then, of course, the construction manager. So, great work, social service team, great organization. So, I do want to say that they were an amazing team to work with, and they played a critical part to the success of the pilot.
Hi, Mayor and Council. So, I wanted to talk about how we engaged residents. We did, of the 400 single-family households that participated, that were living in the neighborhood, about 150 of them participated in our events and classes and trainings that we held in partnership with Habitat for Humanity. Collectively, with both our staff and Habitat, we provided extensive outreach to all the homes in the area. We knocked on doors a minimum of five times per house within the neighborhood, really tried to educate people through mailers and flyers too, and leaving things behind and having those nice one-on-one conversations as well. Habitat also really helped us to take time with residents and walk them through the application process, which was kind of lengthy and could be overwhelming to some folks. So, they had a really good method of sitting down with folks and walking them through the process and really making sure people felt educated and welcomed in the program. So, we're showing you here the survey results. We did do a pre- and post-survey to address the results-driven contract that we put together. And the goals were, the primary goals were to increase residents working together in addressing neighborhood issues. So, these results here are showing what residents reported back to us. And we went from 25% to 48% in residents reporting back that they work well together. We also wanted to increase residents who view homes and yards as being well-maintained. So, their perception of yards being well-maintained went from 30% to 59%. And for homes being well-maintained, it went from 31% to 59%. And then, we also wanted to see an increase in residents knowing how to use city services and programs. And 59% of the residents taking the survey reported that they felt they were much more familiar with our services and resources as a result of the LIN program. Other notable results, we saw an increase in folks reporting that they take pride in the neighborhood. That went from 71% to 90%. And also, an increase in residents feeling safe went from 40% to 69%.
Lindsay, I have a question. Go back to the slide on free of inoperable vehicles.
Yes.
Explain that one a little bit more.
So, that's again residents reporting that they feel the neighborhood is free of inoperable vehicles. So, when that goes up, that's a positive.
It's positive?
Yes.
Okay. I'm thinking of vehicles that are abandoned or not working in front of driveways and things like that.
They would be, yes, that's right.
Backyards.
Or parked in the front yards or that kind of thing.
Okay, thanks.
So, we did have great assistance from code. They really played an important role in helping us to track the impact of our program. They did a pre- and post-assessment as well of the neighborhood. And prior to doing the post-assessment throughout the program, we, as a collective, both with code officers, with Habitat staff, and as well as our staff, we really educated residents on the code issues so that they were familiar with the ordinances and how to maintain their properties. We offered classes and flyers, and we had a couple of pop-up events where we had code officers out in the neighborhood with our staff so people could just walk right up, talk to us, get a donut, and learn about code issues so that, so they were familiar with them. We also provided a lot of clean sweep dumpsters and volunteers to assist in folks cleaning up the debris and things that they had in their front yards that were often part of the violations. So, as a result of all of that, after the program, we saw a decrease in a lot of the code issues. So, this time, decrease is a positive thing. We went, we saw a decrease in fencing, issues with fencing, issues with housing conditions, illegal construction, exterior junk and debris, exterior storage, and parking in yards. So, less parking in yards was reflected here as well. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Guy Jakes and code. He did a really great job with our assessments, and we appreciated his help. Continuing with the education, these photos are reflecting the Habitat for Humanity classes that were offered in the neighborhood. They offered four events for us in the process, and we also provided a few other events with our staff. In a total, we offered 14 total hours of education to residents living in the neighborhood. Habitat addressed issues of home maintenance, energy efficiency, preventing fire hazards. They touched on code ordinances as well. They covered prescription drug abuse awareness, hazardous waste disposal, and green living best practices.
Hello, Mayor and Council. In addition to the classes that Habitat provided, they were also key in doing the renovations of the homes. The renovations consisted of roof replacements, painting, landscaping, some window and door replacements, and other improvements. We were trying to address the curb appeal of the neighborhood. That's what we're looking for. So, some of the additional projects that we did, we did 19 stump removals in the area where you had stumps in the front yard or along the roadway. We also constructed six block walls where fences had, wood fences had become dilapidated. In one situation, we conducted some block walls where trash barrels were lying in the street along a row of fourplexes. By putting the fences up and a gate up, we worked with the owner of those fourplexes, five of those fourplexes, to have the trash barrels actually moved off the street, because they were always on the street all the time, to behind those fences and out of sight. Made a huge improvement in that row as you drive down that street. In addition, transportation upgraded some of the landscaping that was dying along Country Club, around the First Avenue area, definite improvement there. And there are some additional improvements going along Second Avenue, coming up in the next few months as part of the Hibbert Street improvements. Second Avenue street improvements are also being done there as far as the landscaping goes. There are some properties, as Liz had mentioned earlier, where we worked with code enforcement, building inspections, and the police department to address some of the vacant and blighted structures. This is example of one of those, where we didn't put any CDBG funds into this property. It was strictly all done by the owner. There was four new homes constructed in infill lots in that area during this timeframe that we were operating in there. There were six homes that were remodeled on their own, again, without CDBG funds. And one of the biggest accomplishments was the apartment complex on First Avenue and the major renovations they did there. New paint, replaced the patios and balconies, windows and door replacements in there. It's a much-needed improvement and definite improvement to the neighborhood. In addition, there were some other neighborhood projects that the city had done. There were volunteer projects as part of the Love Your Block project. They included the Veterans mural at American Legion, some little libraries, three of them in the neighborhood, yard cleanups, alley cleanups, as well as the gating of the alleys in addition to some curb painting. We had a total of 142 volunteers through the city, and Habitat provided 16 additional volunteers as part of the renovation projects that they did.
Talking about lessons learned, one of the things that we learned early on before Habitat joined us is that neighborhood engagement takes time. It also requires a lot of relationship building and building trust. And this was, we worked on this, as Lindsay talked about, through our outreach and reaching out to, knocking on doors and one-on-one meetings. As residents started submitting their interest, we realized that when we asked for eligibility determination, that that caused them to feel a little overwhelmed. And so, that was part of the struggle of that trust. I'm giving these people from the city my personal information. When Habitat came in, they really provided that resident support, making them feel that what they were providing was appropriate and being done in a timely manner. So, providing that federal assistance had a little bit of a drawback on that relationship building, but it was required in order for us to use the CDBG funds to show that we're using them for eligible families. Thankfully, Habitat also was, having been a reputable nonprofit in the community and a national level, that also provided that collaboration between city and nonprofit. And they helped us through addressing challenges and finding solutions. And that teamwork and communication went very smoothly. The fourth lesson learned was about neighborhood leadership. You know, it's great when we can come in with a lot of resources and a lot of manpower, and then, if we leave, and that was one of the big concerns when this was first brought to council was, how are we going to make sure that we just don't come in and then leave them hanging? And so, one of those priorities was to develop that neighborhood leadership so that the changes and improvements could be sustainable. And what we found through the work with Habitat is that some leaders did come to the top. And so, we're really excited about continuing that relationship with these leaders and finding new ways to support them. And I know that one of the next steps we're doing as a result of the work of Councilmember Duff is a neighborhood leadership program, and we really want to plug them into that and be able to make sure that they can continue to communicate and engage with the city. Of all the lessons learned, one that always stands out to me is, when we serve our residents, is the importance of home. You know, most people value their home. They want to take pride in it, and they want to feel connected. However, sometimes things happen to people along the way, whether they lack the resources to make the improvements, or they get ill. A lot of things can happen, and they start seeing their house with problems, repairs that need to happen, or they might have neighbors who are letting their properties go. And it can get very discouraging. And conversely, when people see their homes come back to life, fresh paint, landscaping, roof repairs, it has a significant impact. It also has that domino effect to other neighbors. And so, it was, it really turned into a beautiful thing. But it's a long process. It's a lot of resources. It's a lot of time. But the investment did show to have the impact that we were looking for. We now have better-informed residents, and we have great organizations like Habitat for Humanity in Mesa helping us. Although the CDBG funding has been fully expanded, we know that new opportunities moving forward is the neighborhood leadership program to continue providing resources through our homeowner rehabilitation program for those who didn't get to participate but might want to utilize that program. And then, also continue to return periodically to the neighborhoods with educational opportunities to share them, show them how to care and maintain their home in the neighborhoods. So, in the end, I want to thank Ray and Lindsay and Emily for their work, and we know that this was well worth the time and effort. Any questions?
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Luna.
So, Liz, I know you've completed this project. Are you planning to continue on, apply for more CDBG funds to look at other areas in the community? Are you going to focus on, only on this side, on the West Side?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, we did not come back in this last, well, what we just did with the funding request, because we didn't really have the impact, the surveys, the results of the code enforcement, we didn't know. So, we didn't really want to come forward until we had all the information. Depending on what council wants to see in the use of CDBG funds, we can always revisit this. Again, this can be very long-term, a lot of investments. So, the idea is where, and hopefully with the Housing Master Plan, when we start looking at strategies and recommendations, is this where we want to, where council wants to invest CDBG funds. So, that's definitely within your ability to decide if that's the direction you want to go.
Mr. Freeman.
Thanks, Liz. You know, this is a good lesson for me to learn how you're working with the neighborhoods, because I think reaching out to the neighborhoods, empowering them with the ability to resurrect or renovate their neighborhoods is important and makes our city look great. Working with street representatives or block watch captains or whoever that might be, were there any, like, community groups, like, I'm just going to throw West Mesa Development Corps, were they there and others in the area? Did they help assist at all and work with them?
So, I don't know if, so, Mayor.
Or did you use them?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, I will tell you, for instance, through the RFP process, we did see some interest, for instance, West Mesa CDC. But in the actual implementation, we had a lot of volunteers who were from a variety of groups, but I couldn't say that there was any particular community group that did any singular projects. I will tell you, Rail Mesa was also very helpful in providing feedback when we were doing our RFP process. So, we do know that many of the groups that are very interested in Mesa did participate either through public comment or through applying for the RFP process. And then, we just had a lot of Mesa residents who participated in volunteer projects.
And kudos to Habitat for Humanity. Appreciate them jumping in there with their workforce to really help you reach out in the neighborhoods. And I think this is going to be a project that I know I'd like to support in my district because there's a lot of older neighborhoods that need, you know, you use the word blight index, you know, and you're looking at that, and there's some cleanup that needs to be done. But empowering those people to improve their neighborhoods is just, it's a great thing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jen?
Yes, I have a few comments and questions. First of all, thank you for the work that you've done on this. It's made a tremendous difference in the area for sure. I know from the time I was campaigning for this council seat and going through the neighborhoods and then going through them most recently, it's like night and day. Some of the areas that I was so worried about are just like, wow, it's just like a whole new, and I'm very excited about what that means for the neighborhoods. So, thank you to you, Habitat for Humanity. Code Compliance has done tremendous work, and so, thank you for that. Is this program tied into the National League of Cities campaign? Is that part of it, or is this independent?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, I would have to say it's independent, but I know that when this first came out, there was probably some tie there to some of the work that was done on blight. Councilmember Glover had written a white paper on that, which Councilmember Richens at that time had cited. And so, that, I'm sure, was part of a lot of the work that had been done on a national level as far as models and best practices.
Well, we certainly should post our progress with the National League of Cities under that program if it's appropriate. Has there been any analysis or could there be, and looking at during the time period, pre-time period and now, as far as crime in the area, has it reduced? I would think that it would. An engaged neighborhood is usually a safe neighborhood, but...
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, I'm glad you asked that because I did forget to mention a couple stats. I want to thank Evan. All red, thank you. I'm like blank. And Janet Woolam and Dee McKenzie was doing the before and after on the blight index. One of the things that came out of, when you're looking at 27 to 2018, both on code and graffiti, what we saw was an increase in reports of incidents. So, on code, it went from 34 in 2017 to 84 in 2018. And then, on graffiti, the reports were 45 to 66. And in talking to Lindsay with the work that they've done with building stronger neighborhoods and a lot of things that has happened, that that's not unusual, the correlation that when you're in there, people are reporting more. What we saw on the site of the crime, there was 401 incidents in 2017 and 230 in 2018. Now, again, there's probably a lot of factors, and there's not necessarily a direct correlation. But again, there was a lot of work and impact being done. As we talked about, that multifamily property was taken over by new management. They were working with police department to address issues. So, you know, there's a lot of investment and time by many departments and the residents in that neighborhood to do better. So, I think those are good statistics to share, to reflect that.
So, you're saying approximately 400 incidents of crime reported in the previous year compared to the post-year, around 230 roughly? So, that's wonderful. So, you talked about ways, you know, to bring it forward through leadership and something like that. Are there ways that we can do that and learn best practices, not necessarily through funding, that we can expand some of the practices in other neighborhoods that need lots of love and not necessarily that need the CDGB dollars, but in engagement with the residents in order for them to take it on and own it for themselves? I'd be interested in what we can do.
Sure. Hi, Councilmember Duff, Mayor. So, with the leadership program, you'll see that it will touch a lot of different neighborhoods. And the goal of that program is really to provide that education piece. And we will have our classes, but also some other ways to engage people almost on a weekly basis through Nextdoor and our social media to really add that education and empowerment piece. And also, that will then bring people back to us that are eager to do more in their neighborhoods. So, that'll help us create new relationships in neighborhoods and touch the folks that, like we found in Love Your Neighborhood area, that want to do more. And we can work with those folks on an individual basis as well.
So, through social media, you can post ideas or best practices or tips and they can integrate?
Yes. And we're trying, we're in the process of developing kind of a trivia polling feature through Nextdoor where we have it on a regular basis each week, where we are providing all kinds of different trivia about the city and how to maintain your property. And did you know, you know, these are the ordinances, or these are the resources available? And having it be kind of a fun back-and-forth with residents so they can answer the questions, and then, we can provide more education. And we plan to engage all departments that would like to participate in that too. So, it should be citywide education and regularly going out to, Nextdoor right now has over 75,000 Mesa residents on there. So, we should hit a good target audience there.
Wonderful. Thank you again.
Sure.
This is great. I guess it's no surprise to see that when you focus on a neighborhood and you bring city resources and you partner with great folks like Habitat for Humanity, that obviously there's a measurable improvement in those neighborhoods. So, that's fun to see. I guess my question is, we want this to be sustainable, right? We don't want this to just be a pilot project, and we think, oh, remember a few years ago when we really helped those neighborhoods, you know? And it's not something that becomes part of our DNA, right? So, I have, I'm intrigued with, Councilmember Duff has talked about this neighborhood leadership program, and I've heard you talk about it as well, is the thought that this will evolve from a pilot project into a neighborhood leadership project? That we will then, in perpetuity, look at all the neighborhoods in Mesa that maybe are, a lot of them have HOAs and there's leadership structure built into them? A lot of them, particularly in the blighted, older neighborhoods, don't? I mean, what's the next step so that this is not just a flash-in-the-pan success story and it becomes sustainable?
So, Mayor, our neighborhood leadership program, we're still in the process of creating it, but we have some good bones to it. of creating it, but we have some good, good bones to it, is really, it's a separate program from this, but we are planning to engage this neighborhood so that we can continue to engage those leaders and reach out to new leaders as well as folks that we know already that have expressed interest and want to do more in their neighborhoods. So it is separate, but it is supposed to really help continue the education, engage people, city resources, really teach them how to do it. A lot of people that we talk to regularly that call us to problem-solve issues in neighborhoods or that we go out to neighborhood meetings, they don't know that, about clean sweep dumpsters. They don't know how to report a streetlight or graffiti or some basic things that we are good at taking care of as long as people are telling us about them, since they're the eyes and the ears of the neighborhood. So it's really meant to enhance that education piece and empower neighborhood residents to be leaders, to spread that word through the neighborhoods. And then also, we have kind of a tiered level. We're doing resources as well as emerging leaders, empowering them to register their neighborhoods, create Block Watch programs, and kind of take their role to the next level. We'll also talk about engaging on city boards and other things like that in, in our, our third tier. And how to be aware of meetings like this and agendas for city council and multi-layered approach. But it is separate from Love Your Neighborhood.
Yes, and Mayor and Council, I do want to say that as we look at the next funding year again, looking at what we decide on the Housing Master Plan, that we might take what we did here and, and tweak it and make the, the parts that work and keep that in there. We might do a similar RFP and decide if we want to do neighborhoods based on the blight index or if we just want to pick CDBG areas. There's a lot to look at so that it can be more citywide versus just very microscopic on one neighborhood. But we can always, the idea is to continue to put education with that code and also the beautification. So those three components, I think, is what we know works. And so I think as we evolve and we talk about what we want to do with CDBG funds, this can be a model that we say, how can we replicate that?
I agree. I guess my, my concern is I'd like to see it turn into a, I mean, five years from now, these, if we visit these homes, they might, you know, be registering higher on the, on the blight index again, right? So the question is, how do we target the neighborhoods that aren't, aren't registered? Go in and do some leadership development and hopefully create a, a structure that is sustains, not just for the short term while we're focusing attention on the neighborhood, but continues after we, we leave the intense engagement in that neighborhood. And it would, I guess, what your suggestion is maybe part of that, we, we address in our Housing Master Plan and we say, going forward, here's our program for neighborhoods that aren't already organized.
Yes. Mayor, I would say that that is going to be something that we'll be bringing forward, understanding that that's, if that's the desire of the council, if you provide us that direction to include that as part of that discussion. Because part of the Housing Master Plan is going to looking, is going to be looking at existing housing stock and the condition of those. So we will continue to keep that in mind and, and also fold in the work that neighborhood leadership does into whatever we do with CDBG funding or other types of funds.
So Mayor, Council, so I think, I, I can kind of sense from Council concern that this kind of gets left behind on the shelf and there's, the momentum that's created gets lost. So I think our commitment is, is, while we're kind of talking about them separately, the neighborhood leadership program, but I think what we see is recognize that we spent a lot more than $400,000 in this location, because that only counts the dollars we drew down from CDBG, there's a lot more. And this was how large of an area? Square miles?
Gosh, I'm terrible at that.
Maybe one, not even one's. Not even one. I was thinking, I thought you were going to tell me half, but, okay, so let's, let's round out to one. The city of Mesa is, how many square miles? 100 and, I think we just annexed, so we're going to say 140. So whatever. So you can imagine now taking all those resources and multiplying it times 140. So we recognize this could be a very effective tool in some areas, but what we really want to work on is the capacity building within the neighborhoods. And that's where we wanted to kind of first go here with the neighborhoods. But listen, if we have neighborhoods that are organized and the residents come to us and say, "We need help," Lindsay's on that. Lindsay will, and we will pull the resources of the exist, we don't have to wait for another CDBG round, that's helpful, but not all areas of the city that need this kind of help are even eligible for CDBG. So we've got to figure out, we've got to take this model and figure out how to continue to do it, even with our existing programs, whether it's Code, Fire, Police, whatever. And so our commitment is, is, as neighborhood leaders create the capacity and come to us and are organized, we will respond to them. We will deliver the services and work with them. But it's kind of getting it organized. And I think that's what we see is on the front end, instead of selecting the area and then trying to create the neighborhood capacity, because we want to create the neighborhood capacity, then have them come and work with us and tell us what they want to see done in their community. So that's kind of the thought where we are today. And certainly, we can look at this in future budgets to dedicate specific resources, but we wanted to kind of step back and say, it's really in the human infrastructure, the neighborhood infrastructure or the community that really will make this successful. And we will respond to that. We can respond to that as they are developed. But we have, we feel like we have an obligation to really bring them in, make them aware of the resources, have them get trained so that they can become the advocates and the stakeholders for their community versus just somebody from staff walking into their neighborhood and saying, "Here's what we're going to do for you today." Does that make sense? I don't know if that helps, but I think the big picture, that's kind of where we're going to go. We'll have the Housing Master Plan again as another indicator to help us direct specific resources. But I want everybody to think, if we have neighborhood groups that come to us today and they're organized and they want to, they have a specific plan, we will sit down with them and we will try to find ways to deliver services even today.
That's great. I just wonder about the neighborhoods that might even lack the, or existing leadership to...
So that's why we need your help and we will work on those areas and get those neighbors into the leadership program, because we need to have that in order for us to be successful. And I think that's what we're trying to do, is identify those opportunities going forward.
Thank you. I would like to continue the discussion of this during the, when we talk about the Housing Master Plan. I think it would be the right place to have that conversation. Other comments or questions, Council? Thank you very much. Appreciate the great presentation. Next item on our agenda is item number three, that's to acknowledge receipt of minutes. Is there a motion in a second? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item four is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. I know we've been busy. Who would like to share? Mr. Luna?
We attended the recruit graduations for, for both Fire and Police. Fire, I think they had 27 and Police had 34 graduates. So proud of the recruits for all their hard work. They had rigorous training, but they're ready to get to work and we're very excited to have them.
I agree. And both were extremely impressive groups of people. I was, you know, that's such a competitive, both of those such competitive professions, it was fun to see just how outstanding the people were that were coming out of our academies. Very, very impressive. Other events you'd like to talk about? I, a couple of things come to mind. I think several of us attended our friend Mike Wayland's services this afternoon, just to again express our condolences to Mike. He's a former council member, former longtime Mesa Police Officer and Assistant Chief and Ho-Ho Cam, tremendous asset in our community, will be greatly missed. Also, last week, a couple of events that I just wanted to highlight. I was able, the Desert Southwest Conference of the United Methodist Church held its conference, and that's a large organization, that's multi-states. They held their conference here in Mesa and I was privileged to, to meet with them and welcome them. They do a lot of great work in our community, so just appreciated them focusing Mesa as the, the, the location for their annual conference. Also, if you haven't had a crumble cookie, you need to go to Longbow and, and Higley. There is, just, Recker, excuse me, right in front of the Sprouts. We had, there was a ribbon cutting there over the weekend and I had a hard time leaving when, at the end of the ribbon cutting. It was really good. So welcome them to our community. Any other comments you'd like to share with this Council? Mr. Brady, what's our schedule look like?
Good news, Mayor and Council. There will be no study session this Thursday, June 20th. The next study session will be Thursday, June 27th. And just a reminder, our final two council meetings after tonight will be July 1st and July 8th. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll go upstairs. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.